Okay, thank you for coming. We will call meeting to order. Tuesday, September ninth, meeting for the Coachella Valley mosquito vector control district. We'll have broken Megan, please.
President.
Vice President.
President.
Secretary.
President.
Project figure out.
President.
Trustee down. Trusty Gardner.
President.
Trusty Larson. Trusty Ortiz.
Here.
Trusty Rob.
Here.
Trusty Violet. And trusty waffle.
Yeah.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And prior to the pledge, I want to ask for a moment of silence on behalf of nine eleven. We're pretty close to nine eleven. So I would ask that we have a moment of silence.
Your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this fallen liberty and justice world.
We'll move on to confirmation of agenda. Anything from staff?
No changes.
Anything for the board? If not, we'll move on to public comments. Megan, do we have any public comments?
Public comments or non-agenda or agenda items and no one in the waiting room.
Great. Move on to announcements, presentations and written communications. We have none unless there's something that came in later. We'll move on to the consent counter. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent counter unless something somebody wants to pull something.
Ben Getrans will move.
Is there a second? Motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to the business session. We have no old business today. We'll move on to new business. First item of new business is discussion and or approval to appoint three members in the board of trustees to form an ad hoc centennial committee. Jeremy.
Yes, my PDF blanked out, but as I think the board knows in twenty twenty eight will be our hundredth anniversary of the district since nineteen twenty eight. And part of our new plan is to put together celebration for that year. And so we're going to start an ad hoc centennial committee, at least three. I think that's a good number. It should for coordinating with some of our trustees and also staff that will be working on it myself and Robert as well as Megan. And so we're just looking to have three interested trustees to participate in that process.
Oh, volunteer.
There is one. I know Felipe brought this up. There's two. Who else? You don't. Anybody else? We have three. Anybody else? There we go. There you have it. Megan, you got those names? Great. Thank you. So I'll entertain a motion to approve. Beto, Ben, we put it to the ad hoc committee.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to item number two and or the discussion and or approval to partner with Kylie and Associates to provide consulting services and support district staff in the development federal advocacy and grant program after exceed twenty six hundred dollars.
Yeah, I was gonna introduce them. Megan, are they online? Okay. So yeah, earlier this year, David was attending the CSDA GM summit and he met folks from Kylie and Associates. Who do work for several Coachella Valley agencies on federal funding and advocacy. So myself, David and Jennifer met with them on a Zoom meeting to talk about some of our projects that we have in the works, one of those being the SIT lab project. As well as raising our federal advocacy. And so through discussions with them. We think that there's a lot that Kylie and Associates can advance our goals with the district. So on with us today is Jason Brown, who's the chief counsel and Mike Lane, who's their senior partner. If you don't know Jason, Jason brings over fifteen years of experience in government affairs, served in senior roles, multiple members of Congress, and he's most importantly, you at UC Santa Barbara Gauchos. And a Southwestern law graduate based in Washington DC. Then Michael's a US Army officer with deep expertise in federal policy and risk management. And he's advised agencies like the Department of Defense, state and treasury, maintains strong ties across Capitol Hill. And so they're gonna here today to present to us the proposal for the district answering questions that the board may have. So welcome Jason and Michael.
Thank you, Jeremy. Good afternoon, board. It's good to be happy to answer any questions is. Yep.
So Jason, a little sound issue.
Can you hear me now? Let me try my phone. I'll call you guys back.
Jason, I can hear you just fine. I think it might be on the.
They're working in the back room.
We can hear you. It's not over the loudspeaker.
Inside the tin can.
Got it, got it.
Sure.
Yeah, how about grants on audio?
We could get on that.
Just work flawlessly the finance.
Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Cannot hear you at all.
Yeah. Can you hear us? Testing one, two.
One more time, Mike.
Uh, test, test. Can you hear us all right?
Test, test, test.
I could try to shout.
We can hear you. Maybe just speak up. Okay, continue on.
We can definitely, we can definitely do that. We did prepare some slides. I'm not sure if you would prefer to talk through those or I can do a quick five to ten minute overview of who we are and what we do if that would work.
Hey, Mike, can you give you charity privileges?
Yeah, I can. I can hear you all right.
No, he said, do you have the sharing privileges on?
Oh, yes, I do. So if you can hear me, I'm happy to kind of go through these kind of quickly for everybody on the line, assuming you can hear me.
I think we have our marching orders for a new audio system. Testing.
I'm sure they'll get it. Yeah.
You know, while we had a same issue just a couple of days ago, the parent was perfectly fine and didn't work.
Jason and Mike, we're gonna, if you have the time, we're gonna move on to a couple other agenda items and then come back to see if we can get the audio up and running. Absolutely. Happy to stand by. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let's move on to item number three. Do these kind of quickly. It's the approval and or discussion contract with reliable tree works removal trees. From the district perimeter fence line and not to exceed thirty three thousand seven oh five day.
Hey, good evening. So this item is a budgeted item. It's coming out of the capital budget. It's for security enhancements. We receive three proposals to move the trees on the perimeter of the district property. And the lowest bid was from reliable tree works at three thousand seven hundred and five dollars. And staff recommends other audit trustees approves contract with reliable tree works.
Questions to staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, David. Move on to the next item discussion and or approval of earthquake insurance.
Okay, so this item is from the strategic plan. Objective six point two, secure financial resources for disaster recovery. And the district currently doesn't have earthquake insurance. And so we asked VC JPA to get us some proposals. We received proposals ranging from sixty nine thousand up to a hundred and twenty six thousand. The current proposal that we have is the lowest proposal, which is sixty nine thousand from the Vicco Insurance Services. It has a five percent deductible and it ensures the administration, operations, lab buildings and the storage areas. And it ensures up to fourteen point nine million for earthquakes. Fourteen point nine million. Five percent. Five.
Yeah, it also covers flood. I think David mentioned that as well. Yeah.
So, so is that also insured by the California earthquake authority? Because I, my homeowner's policy got buy through by homeowner's carrier, but they reinsured through the California earthquake authority.
Right.
I'm not sure how it works. I know that VC JPO, our insurance provider, and they went out to bid and got us some proposals from different insurance agencies. I'm not sure if they're part of that authority.
It's the concerns about the California earthquake authority is if there's a massive earthquake and the claims exceed the resources. It leaves you a little bit out on the ground. I don't disagree that we need earthquake insurance because it certainly, we live in that country, but. Think we don't know for sure.
Yeah.
And I. The coverage.
And an accompanying question regarding regarding the California earthquake coverage is exclusion. I know only we're looking for residential coverage. There were so many exclusions. It was like. What are we paying for? So I think we'd want to be assured that not just the five percent, but that there aren't exclusions of types of structures that they just don't cover.
You're right on that. So it's not just the deductible. And there's a list of things that won't be covered.
So then exclusions that are listed on the policy are like for biological chemical materials, wars of war, radioactive contamination, nuclear incident, electronic data processing, computer systems, pollution, asbestos, some microorganisms, earthquake sprinkler leakage. Which we do have earthquake sprinkler linkage on our other policy with UC JPA.
I have a question. So does this insurance cover versus in case our trucks or fleet gets damaged?
So we actually got a, Jeremy reached out to a bit more and got an extra proposal, which is for an extra six thousand dollars will cover the whole fleet. So take a, take the whole coverage up to something. Is it something million?
I think it's smart to.
It's about seventy eight thousand, I think, taxes and fees.
I mean, how much for fleet costs is like more than that.
That's for sure.
More than that. Yes, I think we'll be smart to throw that in our insurance.
So low. I don't really understand. I pay seven thousand on two vehicles. We haven't been paid seven on forty five. It's almost up forty five.
I don't know with the, with what they're guaranteeing, they're covering about seventeen, over about seventeen and a half million dollars of structure and vehicles.
So they're just getting you a good bunny deal.
I don't know what a good buddy deal. I mean, before that, it's about fourteen and a half million for the structures and it's sixty five plus taxes and fees. So yeah, we had no idea. So when it came back, so that's way cheaper than we thought it would be. But they came from three organizations and this one included flood. The other ones were a little bit higher and they didn't have the flood coverage.
Give us their names.
Yeah.
What then on his company?
Yeah.
We got a great intern looking.
Yeah. No, it's, it's correct.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions?
To make sure that we add the best recovery for our fleet.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be included in the motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
But I really feel I wasn't kidding.
Okay, next one's discussion on purchase of two new twenty two six Argo Frontier utility terrain vehicles.
Hello. Yep. Good evening. Tonight we're seeing approval to purchase two Argo frontiers. These are eight wheel utility vehicles that the technicians use. To transport eighty pounds of control product. They typically use a Marion back activated to shoot that promise. The Argo, the way it moves is is if you ask that here, there's times when the drone can operate trees, hours, homes, or people present. Those have been served for lifetimes. So that's where they are looking in. They're small acres, somewhere less than eight acres. Also, they're going to take care of that shoreline features out there. Primarily, these Argos use desert flooding, dump lumps, day gardens and other areas of shoreline. So bringing two unfortunately allows fleet services to do their preventative maintenance on these pieces of equipment. So we sign through them, share the workload, always provide two or four units for operations to take care of the valley and wherever the fires need to take this. So I'm sure this utility vehicle used by other control technicians is used in desert flooding, dump wells, aid gardens and. Well, well, we're off. So we have any questions?
Questions?
When are we on for spam? Hey, good. You have to go online. You've already arranged that the staff and they can provide what is.
We're still for right.
Very good. You said a good question. These are cheaper to replace the antenna that we had because they serve those purpose. How, how many years have we had those?
Specifically, it's about three years, sort of around five to six hundred hours. Really depends on fire smoke. Right now, when it's the duck love season, so that's when they use a little bit of form than one. I can all get supervisor Sal, Sarah, he's using them from the west shore every Monday. So again, they usually last about two, two to three years, five to six hundred hours of bringing these two new pieces in. Right now, I'm operating on, give us three, allow these services to go ahead and do their PMs on that. Give operations to work with units and we'll cycle through sharing the workload and return on investment.
Most of the general energy, I'm fairly impressed because they know the terrain that they go through. And then they usually come back and show a clean. And so it's very impressive how we take care of her. That's why I'm sure that we are team members.
But that's a team member because it is about a baseline departments, you know, we all are here to have about.
Shows the priority.
Yeah, there's a lot of finding staff. There's okay, I'll be open. So you know, once you go into a third party place, typically it's probably certain costs or. Post it there. They do the work for us. If you post it to the website, get that larger audience.
Okay, all in the motion. Are there any more questions?
So.
Back in the motion started. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Megan, we'll go back to you. Ready?
Hi, Jason, are you there?
Yes, can you hear us now? Does that work?
Maybe.
Go ahead, Jason.
Testing one, two, test, test, test.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you very much. My name is Jason Browdy. I am based here in Washington DC. My colleague, Mike Lane. And I are honored to be here this evening to answer any questions that you have and give you a little bit more background on our firm. We have some familiar faces in the room. We're honored to represent some of your neighbors in the city of La Quinta, the city of Indian Wells, Coachella Valley Cemetery District, and most recently the city of Coachella itself. As, as my fellow Gaucho Jeremy mentioned, and we, Mike and I have a long experience working both on Capitol Hill, both. Inside Congress, I worked for two US congress members and two US senators. Mike has a vast experience working at the Pentagon and other federal agencies as well. And now his work with us on Capitol Hill as well. Mike was gonna give us a little bit brief overview and then we're happy to answer any questions that you have. The biggest thing is there's three different pillars and Mike will talk about this of our work. And obviously getting you some funding opportunities is probably the biggest thing and the most important thing that, that, that we work on, working with both. And you all are very lucky that you have both Congressman Ruiz and Congressman Calvert, and then the two US senators in your district that we can go after some funds for. But without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to my colleague, Mike, and he can go over this brief slide deck and then we can answer any questions that y'all have.
Great. Jason, can everybody see my, my slides?
Yes.
All right. So in the interest of time, I'll try to go through them a little bit quickly. So we covered some of it and then obviously we just intend for this to be a dialogue. If you have any questions, please feel free to, to interrupt me and, and ask them. All right. So the agenda, the few slides we put, team overview, background, our services, then why are our clients partner with us? So Jason and I kind of did our intros. We're the really the day to day folks that you're going to be working with, but we also do have Gregory, Kylie and Kimberly Van Y as part of our team. Greg is our CEO. And Kim is our VP and they both also work extensively on the hill and across Congress, many, many different states and, and other activities. However, Jason and I were the ones that, that met your team members and would be the day to day folks that are going to be supporting you. Kylie and Associates has been around since two thousand and nine. So the, the reason that's kind of relevant, doing the work that we do is a lot of the lobbying, as we would call it, or advocacy, I suppose. It's really a lot about relationships that you have. So the expertise that we bring through the several years working on the hill is we have contacts essentially across all the agencies in the right positions. So if there's an issue that you're having, it's our responsibility to get you in touch with the right person to solve it. And so, you know, we've built these relationships over the course of many years. Jason mentioned that, you know, he actually worked in Congress himself and then I've worked in consulting capacity. For geez, something like ten or eleven different agencies across several years. So Jason kind of mentioned the pillars of what the core of our offering is. So we like to kind of think that what we provide in terms of services can be bucketed into three pillars. Predominantly, the one I think is of most interest right now is securing federal funding. So if you're not familiar, each year, each congressman has fifteen projects that they can submit. To the House appropriations committees and get put into the budget for that year. And so this is called community project funding. There's a similar project aspect called congressually directed spending that's on the Senate side. But essentially what we do is we work with our clients to advocate directly with those congressmen, what the projects are and why they should be supporting those projects to ultimately get those into the bill. So that you essentially will be getting funds for whatever you might, might need. We build the relationships. We help with the advocacy campaign. Because it's, you know, when we're submitting these, they, they might get forty submissions to their office, but they can only pick fifteen. The fifteen that they pick are typically projects where there's been a level of effort and advocacy, you know, to talk about the value of the, the funding requests that they're, they're asking for. So that is our, our kind of our primary function. Jason, did you have something you wanted to add?
And I just wanted, and we'll go over a few samples in a second, but I think one of the biggest ones, and it's right in your neck of the woods, and I apologize that, that we were responsible for this maybe, but half joking here. But Highway one eleven, working in the city of La Quinta, that, that, that funding that for that repavement that just got done, we were, we were instrumental. Working with the city and obviously council member Pena, your leadership on that as well, to get that five million dollars from Congressman Calvert. And right now, you may have seen, and that, that's a direct relationship to our work together with the city of La Quinta there. So I just know that it's a sample of, of our work and I'm glad that the bottleneck is done and that's finally been repaved and ready to go. So just wanted to give that a quick little sample.
Um, just to quickly touch on the other two aspects of what we do, we have direct advocacy there. So essentially we kind of consider ourselves an extension of your organization in Washington. So if you have a problem that Washington DC could solve, we're essentially the folks that will go out directly to the right people to make the connections and help work the problem. So for instance, recently, one of our clients, Rancho Palos Verde, they're having some massive issues with landslides and FEMA funding. And their funding was running into issues with actually getting the disbursement. Jason and I went to the White House. We met with one of the teams there that specializes this. Their issue got brought up to President Trump. President Trump engaged the director of FEMA and they're making movement on that. That's just kind of one example of the many things that we do. Interacting with these agencies to help solve whatever problems might arise. So if it's EPA, if it's FEMA, if it's interior, whoever it might be, transportation. We, we're the ones that use to say, hey, we have this problem. And then we essentially on your behalf, go and help solve whatever the problem might be. And then the last bit is what we call just government intelligence. There's a lot of noise in Washington DC. So we take all the activities that Congress is doing, whether it's new laws, policies. Decisions that are being made, all of that, we help kind of synthesize that and digest it and then provide it to you in a, in a manner that, you know, will save, you know. We're letting you know what you need to know. And everything else, you know, we're, we're, we're getting rid of the noise there. So those are the three kind of fundamental aspects of what we do. But I think the most important slide that we kind of prepared here for the end is, you know, what, what's the value proposition of what you're getting? So, you know, as we mentioned, you know, we have the, the monthly retainer, we start working for you. And a lot of what we do is collaborating with you on your behalf to find out what your priorities are that Washington can solve. And then we help support that through working with the folks in Washington. Jason and I both each live a ten minute walk from Congress. So we're constantly there meeting with the right people, the right influencers, decision makers, et cetera. Our expected return on the investment, so kind of what you would get is predominantly through, you know, while there's sort of the, the value from the direct advocacy and intelligence doesn't have a dollar value attached to it. But when we're talking through what the, the funding, the CPF that we talked about, your typical goal is somewhere between two hundred fifty thousand to one and a half million within the first year. Now is a great time for us to start supporting you because we have the entirety of the fall and the first parts of the spring to do the advocacy when these submissions are due around the March, April timeframe. But what we did is in the very bottom with the bold, we wanted to kind of give you an example of real world FY twenty six, what kind of return did our clients in California get? So as you see there, we have approximately thirty four point four million in funding for our clients across California. And then we, we listed a couple of the different projects for some of your, your neighbors. Jason, I'll turn to that if you want to provide any color on, on the ones that we have listed below. But this is all real. This is not notional. This is what is in the FY twenty six budget and these places will get that funding once the budget is approved. But Jason, over to you.
No, and thanks, Mike. And happy to answer any questions from the board. I would add one other thing as well. One thing that we also like to do is. one thing that we also like to do is uh, plan a trip uh, to have you all come out to Washington DC and really promote the district. Uh, and that also can, you know, lead to some funding opportunities. I mean, just thinking immediately uh, of all the great work you all do, and, you know, gain you in front of uh, Health and Human Services, gain you in front of uh, you know, the Environmental Protection Agency, et cetera, just to find out, you know, number one, uh, what funding might be out there, you know, how you might be able to uh, you know, learn to improve things that are going on in your neck of the woods, and then finally, just really put you all on the map uh, even more than you're already uh, and, and really have some, some good opportunities in Washington DC to hopefully make some headways. Uh, so with that, uh, and as Mike mentioned, um, you know, uh, you can see there from, well, we talked about Highway one eleven, uh, in Indian Wells, we're working on um, uh, a storm, uh, something there, the, the storm um, drains and, and something across the um, the creek there uh, off of sort of behind City Hall in, in Indian Wells, if you're familiar with that. At the Coachella Valley Cemetery District, uh, we worked with Congressman Ruiz and Congressman Calvert. They're very similar to you that uh, they have both congressmembers. Uh, we were able to get a million dollars to repave uh, the Coachella Valley Cemetery District property. And uh, we're just waiting for President, for the President and Congress to sign that into law shortly, and then uh, Paris to Rupe Valley, Upland, um, Rupe Valley actually got two set, two projects from Senator Schiff and Senator Padilla, and then one from their congressmember. And as Mike mentioned, uh, it's not just Congressman Ruiz and Congressman Calvert, Congressman, or sorry, former Congressman Schiff, now Senator Schiff and Senator Padilla also have these funding opportunities. Uh, so look forward to answering any questions and hopefully welcoming you to Washington DC soon, and help promote the district however we can.
I know they've been very helpful, La Quinta. I, I'm gonna be out uh, October thirteenth, that day out in DC, we have sunlight, get some transportation, she's the working ass, I'll be going, okay, none of us there, it's, it's not like saying I'm. So again, questions? I'll make this here, couple of quick things, not necessarily for the uh, Congress meeting, both to apparently, um, I don't know, I'm sorry, basically, because I made my prayers of lobbies, and uh, and I'm fully believing the value of that. What are you anticipating having to work on for the district?
Yeah, so, so I, I think, and I mean, if I, if I'm a little bit off here, I had a, a little bit of a hard time here. It sounded like you were saying, what would you anticipate that we would work on for the district? Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Hey, Mike, he was asking me a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I.
Question, yeah.
Okay.
I couldn't hear you either.
Yeah, I mean, I think the two big things, one is the RSIT laboratory, uh, staff has been working on Jennifer Technolia and that, that's something that's really impacting her, her department, and we're looking at a facility that not only addressed the SIT uh, program, but also expanding that space to include our expanding public outreach team, as well as creating some space, kind of have an emergency operations center. Because we're trying to look at a multi-functional building that would serve the district needs, not only now, but in the future. Uh, so that's one piece. The other piece is part of our strategic plan, which is just raising awareness with stakeholders, and this piece, I think we've been doing a good effort with our, our local legis, local legislators, state legislators, but we've never had this opportunity to work with other firms like Kylie Associates and Jason and Mike, and I think this it's kind of exciting to see what type of opportunities might present itself, and working with them, because we do, we haven't done that before as a, as a district, so we've had a great advocacy with the state, with our state association, but nothing that was personalized to our district, so uh, with other things on the horizon with, I don't know how uh, supportive the federal government is gonna be with our electrification of our fleet, but that's a big expense that's coming down the road, and administrations change, so that's another opportunity, a big expense that I could see bringing some federal, one, bringing federal tax dollars back, but again, is supporting those relationships, sounding with the, with our, our federal uh, congressional and, and state senators, which has been challenging to, to get them through the door. You know, we've tried, you know, getting some help and, and raising awareness for our district, because I think our district is a premier district here in California, and I'm just excited to see what this opportunity holds, and like it says in the staff report, doing this, as they mentioned, this is the time to get started on this project, earmarks. Uh, but doing this for, looks to be about a year at least, uh, process from start to finish, so at, at the end of the year, taking a look back on what the investment in their, their fees have done, not only intangibles from what we may be able to garner in federal dollars back to the valley, but also kind of the non-tangibles with relationship building with our legislators.
Well, and, and again, you know, having spent thirty years as a lobbyist, um, I know that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, and so I'm glad to see us getting on the tape. And I'm looking at what their, what their retainer is, and um, it's reasonable. In all honesty, I think it's actually a little low compared to what I'm seeing other federal firms charging for services in the district, which is why I was more curious about what you were anticipating having them, having work on. But no, I think it's a, I think it's worth uh, going forward. Um, is, are you, are you looking at a one-year contract on this, or an ongoing till?
It's a year, it's a, it's a month-to-month retainer, but um, based on our conversations with Jason and Mike, the process of going through that process of relationship building, but also getting those dollars on the table, it's gonna be at, at least a year, if not a little bit more than that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think kind of going through that whole process and then, and then reflecting on how that process went, not only with the, the process of getting federal funds, but also that relationship piece, and also kind of what the benefits we raise awareness with, not only our legislators, but our, our federal agencies that do it, uh, have an impact on us.
Well, and, and my thoughts too, in moving forward with this, to be bringing it in front of the EPA, uh, with our site remediation.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the ones that I was gonna. That's probably our biggest challenges going forward is remediation of the old site, and that would take EPA, you know, kind of uh, kind of intervention on that. Lastly, did you, I didn't see in the packet, um, did, did you interview any other firms, or did you, and how did you come across this one?
So we did not look at any other firms. This firm came across because of David's uh, attendance at a, at a CSD meeting, uh, which Kylie was a part of, and Associates, and so that's where we had the conversation going, and then also just with their relationship with other agencies within the valley, uh, with the, a track record with them, seemed like a, a good option, and based on their retainer, uh, seemed reasonable.
Yeah, and I, and I will give you that, the, the, the retainer is quite reasonable compared what I've seen with a lot of other, uh, federal firms, even what I was doing uh, in Washington and a third of them, I was used to paying for stuff like that, I think.
We can, we can change the, we can make it higher if y'all want.
That's why I was like, okay, nice job.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay.
Who do you see leading that?
Are you doing your mic on?
Who would you see leading that? Would it be like a Jennifer thing? Would it be a staff thing or a board thing? Because if it's a board thing, I feel like we're putting the, you know, cart before the horse, because we don't have a list of priorities. If we sign tomorrow with them, where is their workload gonna come from, as you envision it?
Uh, the main focus is, and what we kind of got them at the tables for the SIT project, and so.
So that's, we're gonna go SIT as, as a board and then a district?
Well, we're looking at funds to continue to pursue that, yes.
Yeah.
You know, what we could do, if I can interrupt you, maybe we, we put together an ad hoc legislative committee of members of the board of trustees.
I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I just, I feel like we're gonna sign this contract, and, and we don't even know who's gonna dictate to them a scope of work at this point.
You could also have the executive committee maybe serve in that role. Um, I was wondering, I don't think I heard anything mentioned about um, possible money relating to the development of drones for their use, continuing development going into the future, uh, so I don't know, that might be a possibility to initially have the executive committee work with staff to develop priorities.
Go ahead. Yeah, also for the record, the city has a co, open contract with them, so uh, I think that would be good with the, or an ad hoc that, that does the mediation of, and then comes back and does a study session on what our plans are. The one thing I would do with the contract is it's a one-year contract, and they come back in a year and present what they've done, and then we go on to renew the contract from that, they're on, because I think when you leave it a month to another, it just keeps going, and there, there's no like, uh, firm place to stop, so I would say it would be a one-year contract with the uh, coming back in September next year, do a presentation where things are at, so. And continuing the contract that way.
And the actual, the scope of work is in the, is in the board packet, so that's also listed out, but yeah, I think having a um, having an ad hoc legislative committee to get, because not only getting feedback from staff, but also the direction from the board, I think is a wise way to go, especially as it's a first effort in this type of venture with a consultant firm in this nature, so yeah, that'd be a good decision.
I just, when I saw it, I had spoken to Jeremy about this, and I said, what's the total cost? So it's about thirty-one thousand for the year. My thing is I'd like to know within ninety days where we're at, through one, get a clear, and then have a direct clear mission of three top items that's really focused, but within ninety days, come back to the body as, on through the ad hoc committee and say, this is where we're at, this is what we've accomplished. I really don't like, let's wait till the end of the year. Um, I think the other unique thing is about us is they're gonna be dealing with a body that represents the Coachella Valley. That's, there's a lot of collaboration, so nine cities and two representatives from the counties, we have the entire Coachella Valley working forward with a three gold mission. The biggest burden that I like, and John mentioned it when he first came on board, we need to look for outside funds to take care of the former facility. It's just sitting there in a tomb with, and we don't know how to deal with it, and it keeps coming back. So I really would like to take care, because I think we're responsible for the, the health and environment to that, that was done way for us, but it just sits there capped. And obviously the priorities, I think if we instruct the ad hoc committee, come back with three mission directives and within ninety days, but for thirty-one grand, if it works out well, we'll know within thirty, ninety days where we're at, and I think we can all do that really well.
Well, and getting back to the next point, I think that the executive committee can work in that ninety days, bring something back to the board. So by the end of the year, the executive committee can decide what we're gonna do, how we're gonna prioritize, bring it back, maybe then form an ad hoc committee ongoing after that as well.
I concur.
We pretty much missed the budget this year.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other comments?
That's good.
If not, then I'll entertain the motion.
I'll move.
Is the motion for a second? Just motion second, any further discussion?
Did you clarify anything about? Or, or, or you want to just take it off of our discussion here?
So. I just wanted to, yeah, I was asking for clarity, the, the motion is to, one, enter to agreement with Kylie and Associates, also working with staff and the executive committee to iron out kind of where the direction is versus from out the scope of work to come back to the board.
Within ninety days.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I have my head down.
And then down the road, what was the?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc legislative committee.
Which what we did with is bigger Palm Springs, when I chaired that board, and we hired lobbyists, we went to the legislative, that segments, Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, we got a legislative committee of board members that sets the direction for the lobbyists' follow. Yeah, you know, we can, and the other alternative would be to leave that with the general, which I don't necessarily have a problem with either, but I do think we need to have a clear structure then.
Okay, great. Okay, there is a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Most?
I need to abstain, I'm helping the agency also look for grant handle, and I think it will be a conflict.
The conflict on?
On rating and choosing who to go with or what to do with them, when I'm also doing that with another agency.
Okay, with one exception, okay, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Look forward to meeting with you soon.
Look forward to it, thank you.
Bring us the money.
Yeah, bring us, show us the money.
Thank you very much for your, for your time, and we really look forward to supporting you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Okay, we'll move on to committee and trustee reports. Uh, executive committee, we had no executive committee, unless you had one and I wasn't.
I just, what I, what I do is, uh, I took the time with Jeremy, and we had a really nice conversation about what we were doing tonight.
Okay, yeah. If that, we'll move on to finance.
So in your board packet, page twenty-three is the general fund operational cash flow. We had our trustee, a treasurer, our finance committee, uh, earlier, um, uh, this afternoon, uh, we had a presentation on um, uh, different banking options, um, but we'll talk about those in the future. Uh, David is working on some crafty uh, great things on how to make the district great on the financial side, but I'll talk about this general fund operation cash flow. I know I'm getting scared if you look at it, uh, since I've been on this board, we've never been under that green line in a while. Uh, but uh, don't worry, so I just, because this is the first meeting, uh, and uh, last time I took over as treasurer halfway through the fiscal year, I just wanted to walk you through this table um, and this graph, the general fund operational cash flow graph outlines a district's working capital for the fiscal year. It's July first of twenty twenty-five through June twenty-third of twenty twenty-six. The beginning operational cash flow fund balance is seven point three million dollars, and then the ending operational cash flow fund balance is two seven point three million dollars, which are equivalently spread out in the twelve months. And so that's why I just want people to really see that, but this graph shows a seven point three million dollar in operation cash flow fund balance plus the total revenue for July first to July thirty-first of one thousand six hundred and sixty-four minus total expenses of two point one six hundred, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy, seventy, hundred dollars is five million, one hundred eighty-three, forty-four. Expenditure shows a negative variance of two hundred and fifty-five, and that's because the timing of the pesticide purchase, which was expected to hit in the August um, month in the fund, but it hit in July, so that is why there is a, a variance um, due to the time when the purchase order and the purchase of the pesticides actually hit the um, actuals. So the budget forecast has uh, the best side's right, and so for planning purposes, the district is under budget, however, reports shows are being over budget. And it's as long as the line, the green line stays out of the shaded area, the district is within the budget. But one important thing you look at is the yellow dotted line, and, and you look at that, that's the average of our budget over five years. And if you look at where we are right now, we're above that average, so that is very important to notice that over the last five years, the average, we're still above the average at this time, so I just wanted to point that out to everybody. Um, very important, so if you have any issues or questions or why we're under the green line, it's because of a, it's not an accounting error, it's just not everything hits at the same, the one you think it wants to the head, so it's timing.
So Frankie, Phil, we're comfortable then?
Okay. We should be fine, you had to correct itself in, in September, in August, you'll see it correct itself and, and go back into the line, so.
Yeah, any questions? Thank you, Frank. Okay, we'll move on to trustee comments, request for future agenda items, staff actions, anything for the board and trustee.
I just have one sort of a question that I don't really expect to answer. That's fine, but I wanted to throw it out on the table. I apologize, I've uh, had some issues with my family, and I missed the July meeting, we had an August meeting, so I feel a little bit behind, but I'm sitting here today in our, in our boardroom, and I'm realizing that um, we haven't had an ad hoc building company meeting in a long time, so we have an update on where we are with your plans, and you don't have to give it today, but you can maybe next month or?
We're gonna meet this month.
Oh, we are?
End of the month, yeah, so we're breaking that, David has about ten or seven plates spinning, and so we're gonna have that.
Okay.
Now we're working on, uh, what is the IT piece that we're getting uh, back here, hopefully in the next week or two, but we should be meeting by end of month.
Yeah, IT issues today and stuff, we're like, okay, we haven't had an ad hoc, I know we, we laid all kinds of stuff out, and
Got it.
We, it should be somewhere along the pipeline, so sometimes.
We might bring uh, several, if not all of them, to the board meeting in October, so.
All right, cool, that was, that was all I had, thank you.
Perfect.
Yes, um I just wanted to say two things. Uh I was, I was able to attend the CSDA show conference um two weeks ago in Monterey. It was great. I was able to learn a lot. Um I want to thank the staff, um Jeremy, Robert, um Jenny Perfect Coin, um. Were a small but mighty crew. Um it was it was a good event, so I want to encourage all the trustees, like for the federal ones to attend. Um I also want to give a shout out to Robert for their, to his department for, I was driving. I think yesterday by accuracy and I saw the mosquito um banner, so that was pretty. That was pretty exciting, you know, oh man, I I know that place, so that was good, so I was gonna give a shout out to you guys. And then um I do want to request um to put an an item for our future for our next meeting. I know we're gonna have a discussion on close session about uh the assistant general manager, but I do want to have that agenda hiding on next, next month.
Okay, we'll see how we can have a close.
If after the meeting we need to meet, I'm gonna tell you what exciting means. It doesn't mean that. It was really exciting to see a banner. I was nuts.
It was nice. It was a good surprise. It was it was a good surprise.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll move on to our reports.
Yes, just briefly. I I just want to commend staff. I mean, we have, it rained and now we're really busy, but we have a lot of stuff going on. Uh so I commend all of our IVM group, that IVM means surveillance. Operations and our public outreach team, but also uh Dave and his team been working hard. Uh on the audit, which is his favorite time of year, outside of the budgeting. Um IT and fleet have been keeping everybody rolling and then also HR. Uh we did a, he did a heavy lift this year on on board a new payroll and HRAS system, so that's been really big on their radar, so. Just wanted to commend all staff and all departments on the great work they've been doing uh to keep our mission rolling. Second piece is uh like uh trustee, uh the base head CSD annual conference uh. Just for tease, I'm sorry. We were here at the CSDA conference, uh we learned some things, attended some of the the, some of the sessions with uh trustee Ortiz. Um there's some interesting things about some trustee onboarding and team building with the board, so definitely could be bringing that to the executive committee. Because I think there's some exciting things to to do there we could add as we add on. Hopefully no new trustees anytime soon, but when we do in the future, I think there's some cool things we can do. Um also, I wanted to mention that I know uh trustee Ortiz was interested in was the board governance training certificate. Uh this is offered through CSDA and through the special district leadership foundation. I believe that the CSDA will be coming to the desert next year, so a really big lift would be getting uh recognition for the. For the district as a a district distinction, Mission Springs Water District was at the meeting and got that and that was a nice. Uh nod or recognition for their their dedication to transparency and that's something that we as a as a district and a board can work on, but. They also have five board members and we have eleven, so it's a little bit heavier heavier lift. Uh but there are some some uh I know uh trustee Ortiz is interested. There is some training on governance foundations, charting the core setting direction, which is about strategic planning. Boards role in human resources and boards role in finance, fiscal accountability. So that's something that's offered through S D L F. They typically have long uh training weekends and they typically come to the desert usually in the spring. Uh but we do have some dates, so if there's, if you're interested in that, you know, trustee Ortiz says there are some dates up and ready and also Monterey, but. They should be coming back to the valley next spring and so we'll keep the board posted on that and send some more information out to the whole board. So you get more information and see if you're interested in doing that. Did a presentation with trustee Valley for the city of Indian Wells last week um at the IW club. Which they were late, so they said we could go to the bar, but that was a joke. Uh but yeah, they're. Yeah, they yeah, no one, no one wins, but yeah, I thought that was kind of humorous because I think they're having the city, city halls going through some construction. Um just raise awareness about our our district, uh revised our new strategic plan. Also expressed appreciation to the city, uh they updated their city ordinances not too long ago and and. Allowed the district to comment, add some some verbiage about uh water runoff and and neglected pools and so that was. That was in most of our cities, I appreciate that their codes are looking to limit water runoff, which definitely impacts our our job. We're also operations, Greg is working on uh reefer maintenance programs with our golf courses, we're trying to work. Smarter with the resources we have and so they've been leading a charge this year and getting. Uh golf courses who do have certified staff on board to make applications, a big. Big hurdle for us as a district is coordinating with golf courses to manage the water that's happening. And schedule our services and so what we've been doing with golf courses is training them, giving them the product. And allowing them to to manage when they make make the applications and we as a district monitor to make the applications are working. And if they're not working like they want to, the district steps in and assists the golf courses, but. Uh trying to give them a little bit more of the work, but also providing uh resources to do that for us and we're pushing that with the city of Indian Wells. Um and the last piece that I'll say, uh Megan has been working on uh putting our strategic plan into the. Uh ClearGov program and so by the end of this month, I think we'll have that fully up and running and so I'll definitely send that link to the board. The PDF is on our website, but uh David brought on board the ClearGov for our budget. They had a module for strategic plan and we're just fine tuning that and that'll. Uh give the board a good sense of where we're at with strategic plans and move forward for the next three years. And the last thing I want to plug, if you don't have anything to do September twenty fifth, the special district association of Riverside County. Is having our luncheon. Uh it's a little bit out of town, but it's at Cherry Valley. Uh with same member Jeff Gonzalez will be there presenting and so if you're interested in going and can make it, it's at twelve thirty. Uh sponsored lunch and um I'm sure we'll be having at least one cargo, so if you want to hop in for a ride. Glad to take you with us uh to meet with other special districts of Riverside County and also hear what the same man, uh Jeff Gonzalez is doing in the thirty sixth district. And that's all I have.
Make it, we send that out to the board, the date, time, place. So, thank you. Uh okay, Jennifer, do we have anything from Jennifer? What do you do?
And not just from Jennifer, because I am not able to present on my own. I am so happy that I get to present this with my colleagues. Um it's been a busy little bit of time, so we missed you, Gary, but like we've had a little bit of a busy time and so Jeremy has. Very kindly asked uh that I and Greg and Robert come and give you a little bit of an update of what the teams have been doing. Just so that you're fully aware of all of the things and where all of that money has been going over the past few weeks. So. As a reminder, the three departments Jeremy highlighted were called uh sometimes the IVM. Or the Integrated Vector Management Program, because we are the ones that work together really closely. All the departments were closely together, but the three of us often have information that comes from one that gets a feedback loop into the others. Um and so you will see that the three of us are going to talk about our little programs, but really all of the work is connected to each other. Um we are focusing tonight's presentation on the QLEX mosquitoes and the virus response. If you have questions about other work that you saw on the board packets, any of us would be happy to answer that. But as a reminder, there are five factors that are impacting when there is more risk for virus transmission to be happening. And really the work that all of us do focuses on where did we have positive mosquito samples for a particular virus? Where did we have more mosquitoes being collected in our traps? That is the two top factors that we take a look at on a routine basis. This is what virus looks like in California and the Western US right now. You can see all the colors of. West Nile positive mosquitoes and birds and chickens and St. Louis encephalitis virus samples. This is a very colorful map at this time of the year and it looks really similar to this time last year. Um you might be able to figure out that there's a little bit more of West Nile going on in central California compared to last year, but really this is. This is the heart of the work for not just us, but everybody uh who's working in mosquito and vector control. Um and it is really similar from year to year. We are really fortunate, this is a very average year across the area. We're not seeing a huge uptake in cases for most places. Most everybody is kind of in a routine area. Uh don't tell my neighbors into Larry County that I said that they've had a really tough year, um but everybody else is having a pretty average year when it comes to things. Um this is what it looks like for our virus positive samples here in the valley compared to time. What I would say for the top graph, which is West Nile virus, this year being in red. We've had very low activity compared to an average year. You can see that red line is underneath that five year average. And it came in really late. Normally we'd have seen positive samples in June and July. We didn't really see very much until August. For St. Louis encephalitis virus, it looks really high. And it has been, but really what's happened is that we've had everything in a month. And normally it would have been stretched out over several months, but really everything has come in in August and September. So instead of having three months to work on this, we've had six weeks. So what that looks like in practice is that when Gabby came came and spoke to you all in July, this is where we left off. We'd had two positive samples. Previous year, we'd had a hundred by that point. Um in early August, we had our our start of those detections. We went from two positive samples to now all of a sudden having. Twenty one uh over on the west shore. Um and that means that across the bottom, you're going to see our calendar going of where we are each week. Um with that virus being detected that first week, we put out the press release later that week. Um and that led to um the decision to make truck mounted applications along the west shore. And we unfortunately continue to detect virus positive samples there, but also in the north shore communities as well. Um as we continued, we found um in mid-August, we were still detecting quite a number of um. Positive samples and so again, the team was uh continued to make those applications on the west shore side. In late August, we got a little bit of a break from the applications, um just because we didn't detect our virus until the end of the week. Um we were fortunate that the west shore came back negative, um and so we're able to take a break, but because we found fires at the end of August. That meant that the following week um decisions were made to make adult applications. Um both by helicopter and by truck over on the north shore community. Towards the end of. Uh the week following Labor Day, we did find more virus positive samples on west shore, which means that. Um this week, that team is making applications over there. Um and just today, we found some additional detections on the north shore side. So. That means that right now, this is what our virus activity looks like. You can see it's a little bit of a different year. This year, very St. Louis encephalitis virus heavy compared to last year, that was very West Nile virus heavy. And all of it has really stayed in those west and north shore communities. It's been very much the east end of the valley focused this particular year. With that, that is a high level summary, but Greg's team has done so much work that he's going to give you the next steps of all of the the work that his team has done.
Yes, um Jennifer nicely illustrated that we have had several. Uh positives in a short period of time with the month of August. And as you mentioned, even we have some positives today. So what is it that we've done in response to those positives? Um part of response plan is that we are um. Oh posting disease warning signs to alert the public of the uh diseases in the area. Um in addition to our enhanced surveillance, the the mapping right illustrates all the postings of all the signs. Within those positive locations, roughly we have posted about twenty signs. Uh there are more or less surrounding the the positive traps. Granted, there's not many uh homes in the area, however, there are a lot of uh individuals who are working in those locations. And that that serves us to indicate the presence of the virus. In addition, our team goes out and perform what we call enhanced surveillance. Team uh performs uh needed work. On the far left, you see the individual uh with the article as. At a early uh mention, uh it's primarily used in areas that it's hard to walk, it's hard to access. The team goes out and and utilizes equipment to cover the needed areas, also in in the ag area for known locations and not known locations. And for the areas where it's sometimes it's easily or sometimes accessible on foot. The team goes on and performs those applications. Um and also we're looking at areas that we don't know about. Um sometimes there are, we have our known locations, but then we have to look at other things that may have developed over over the the last few weeks. Due to construction or in or or other water movement. So as Jennifer mentioned, we performed these applications uh in response to the ongoing detections. Um we started early in in August and we continue all the way to the to the end of August and. In the uh beginning of September, we're planning on doing another round of applications uh this week in response to the uh the detections from today. Um so we have done um nine applications in the west shore area, which is the left um map. Uh it's. It's eighty first Johnson all the way to eighty fourth and the express that you see on the left. The map on the right is on north shore locations, which is um yeah, Avenue seventieth. All the way down to Highway one eleven. Some of those areas we show since there's some residential activity there. And we are trying to limit the exposure of the virus. Something to highlight is that we do have some organic fields which are highlighted in green. And that kind of gave us a little limitations of what kind of products we can use since uh we have to uh regulate ourselves. And find the right products for it currently, we only have, well, there's only a product that we know of that is um for adult aside in. Uh that is labeled for organic um applications. So something else to also highlight is some of these missions are more or less about three hours to complete. We have thirty six hours of full missions, thirty staff assisted with this time, staff are coming in at two o'clock in the morning. So it's it's more or less about ninety hours of overtime so far that we have spent doing these types of applications. So there's a lot of labor that goes into it. That doesn't include the planning from during the week, during the work hours. In addition to the ground, we also perform our area, it will be applications. Those have only been, we only done three rounds, but we expect to do another three rounds this week, so those acres will double uh by the end of this week. And those applications are typically done um around seven PM as soon as their sunset. In addition to all that work, we also have our ground uh and drone teams who are doing uh going out and performing these applications to assist. Um staff, there are are two areas where there are hard to access or large body of waters. Uh during that period of time, the 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 ground, I'm sorry, the the drone team. Uh cover about two hundred and twenty three acres uh applying over twenty two hundred pounds. And that assists staff um to come to focus on other areas that are easily accessible. Our berry application is also part of our response plan. This is an application we do targeting adult mosquitoes. That are potentially resting on the vegetation. Our product is applied uh through all those. Either foliage or some vegetation that is that is sitting or near those trap locations. The product will sit there, if there's a mosquito that lands in that area, it could um get, uh the product will then attach to it. To the mosquito and then potentially die within a period of time. So that's more or less has been our response plan. This is ongoing. A lot of this work obviously is done by a lot of. A lot of our team supervisors and and field staff volunteering to do all this work. And with that, I'll pass it on to uh Robert.
So our outreach response uh due to virus activity included. We started with our August seventh press release and we typically do a press release when we have virus activity in a new city. Um so this was the initial one and with that, we shifted our our focus to social media. Uh when we are doing outreach for that community, uh we. With our press release, we are also getting coverage throughout the valley and and some of our news stations further outside of the valley. Which is, which is great. Um but what we transitioned to during our outreach. In response to virus activity was more so community outreach events and pop ups. Uh so we've been. Going to some of our community hubs in the east valley, uh includes uh some of these markets, Eddie's Chapala, uh Tequila. Uh and doing more of the community outreach out in the public. Uh to ensure that we're reaching the residents that are living in that area or working on that in that area. This has uh worked out pretty well for us. Uh we've had forty one outreach uh events in this uh area. Uh we've also, like I mentioned, shifted our social media focus to give attention not only to uh virus activity. But what people can do in that area uh to protect themselves or help us with mosquito activity and that is. Uh focusing on eliminated sources and also using insect repellent. Um something to highlight on our press release, and I think it was highlighted last time as well, we do have a pretty uh a good rate. Of individuals opening our press release, so this time around it was sixty two point two. But again, most of our our focus that we shifted to to was going to to public places. And interacting with people, something a little different that we.
Questions?
Good. One, one, I don't know which one of you wants to answer it, but I was noticing in the graphs for the, uh, aerial application of the larvicide and herbicide and stuff, um, in the past, even on our seven years, we spend a lot of money on helicopters. Did we do everything on a drone this year? Did we have any helicopters out there? I don't remember seeing anything on there, but are we all doing, are we all drones now for that? No, I said, I think, I think it's great, because in the past, I remember us having to do emergency budget things to pay for more helicopters, and if we can move more of that to in-house and on drones, that's gotta be a significant budgetary savings, my. Right with that?
Yeah, I mean, you have staff that run that program full-time, but there's, uh, I mean, one of the adv- advantages of the drone too allows us to be much more focused in space and time, whereas helicopters are definitely carry a lo- a large area with larvicide in. But the drones have been able to really target those applications where the helicopter is a little, not as granular in, in detail. I think Greg, go ahead.
Well, I think in the future, it would be really nice if we're doing our budget, I mean, just even for public relations purposes, to show the cost savings versus that, because I think it's a significant one, and you know, we're stewards of our taxpayers' money, and I think this shows what a great job the district does with things like that and advanced technology. And, you know, we might as well throw about it.
And the, the water district is also working on extending a couple of those channels down there that do feed a lot of our mosquito sources, so I know they're continuing to work on it, and they keep on buzzing in their ear. Uh, but it's a kind of a tricky, tricky area to work in, there's a lot of, uh, landowners, and a lot of, and tricky substrate to work on, but that too, if they can get that completed, that'll also freak some of that habitat and make drone applications even more, um, uh, effective and, and the amount of area will be perfect for drone activity.
Great job. We started out with one, and we had a call, that'll have his input into it, and now we have a whole.
And we did budget this year and was approved for another, uh, UAS operator, so we'll be having one more pilot come on board, so that'll allow our UAS coordinator to not only facilitate them, but also do more planning and be more even effective, and I know that operations and labs here are looking at other ways to use the drones. I know they've, I think was actually in a staff report on making applications to large turf areas with the drone, which is still was effective, but also, is it the best use of drone time, or is it as fast as this, putting a, a cart out there, but it's again, looking for different ways we can use that moving forward.
Chairman, can you just say there's another opportunity out to the grand? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to general counsel. Okay, with that, we'll move into close session. Uh, we do have a close session regarding people employee performance evaluation. Consider covering close section five, four, nine, five, seven. But this time, we will go into close session. Does anybody need to take a short break?
Can we, uh, person, yeah, I need to print something off, but I don't think you may have some, if we can take maybe a five-minute break real quick. All right.